Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to open the special meeting council for the Thursday of February. And in doing so, we'd like to acknowledge the Bangla people as the traditional owners of the land on which we've been to aid and pay our respects to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who may be with us today. I'm grateful for the purpose of the attendance records that we have all councillors here and will report that in a minute. Going to go straight to item 4.1.1. And there's a further report that's been provided to the public agenda. I'll preside over the first part of this nice deliberation until we have an appointment of an acting mayor. And then the acting mayor will assume the role of presiding member for the balance of the meeting. So in turning to item 4.1.1, we're going to understand in this instance that councillors spend many procedures for up to 15 minutes in order for our director of services just to talk through the report and respond to any questions that councillors may have in relation to the matter at the point you. Once we've had that discussion, I'll then, at a very rare time, have called the nominations and start the process of looking to potentially appoint someone to the position of acting mayor. But in the first instance, I get a show of hands from the councillors to spend many procedures for up to 15 minutes, just for the director of services to approve the council. Thank you, councillors, that's carried. And so hand over to Cathy Darrick, our director of services. Thanks, Cathy.
Thanks, Justin, and the members. As you were aware, and as is outlined in the report before you, the consideration on Friday, council was advised that three members of our council had failed to lodge their second campaign donation returns on time. And the effect of that non-wardment is that the officers of those three members become vacant or failing to submit those returns under, and I'll name this part, under Part 14 of the Local Government Elections Act 1999. The date as to when those returns were due was the 20th of January 2020, 19th of December 2022. And the effect of the legislation is at the expiration of one month from the end of that period allowed for submission of the returns. The officers of those members automatically become vacant. And those members are Phil Stein, Sharon Todd and Catherine Campbell. This report is serving as the deputy officer's formal notice to the council of the vacancy of those positions. And as I mentioned, the timelines were such that the second donation return was due to be submitted by the 19th of December. There is a one-month period by which that return can be lodged. And if it's not lodged within that time, the offices become automatically vacated. When the office is vacated, those members are former members. They are now infected members of the public. And they are not allowed or entitled to any allowances or benefits or access to information or council reports or anything in line with, as if they were a member of the council. So I can advise that steps were put in place to ensure that those members' returns, equipment and so on, council equipment, and that is underway to ensure to be compliant with the provisions of the Local Government Elections Act and the Local Government Act. And as also outlined in the report, the former members have 30 days to appeal the vacancy. And that appeal needs to be lodged with the South Australian Civil and Administrative Tribunal, SAICAT for short, and that is required to be lodged for our three members by the 20th of February. You will have heard in the newspapers and on radio that there are a number of council members across South Australia that have had the same circumstance arise for them. Some of those are required to put in their appeal by 13th, that is by today. And the reason for the difference in those dates is actually the dates as to when the elections were actually declared by the commissioner. So the Waiar City Council's election was declared back on the 19th of November, and therefore the 19th of December, due date for the donation returns, the one-month grass period, et cetera. So that's the slight difference in the dates for different members across South Australia. And as I said, the 30 days to appeal for our council members, former council members, that's the 20th of February. Any proceedings to fill the casual vacancies that have now arisen cannot commence until such time as if an application is submitted to SAICAT that the application is determined by SAICAT. So the council vacancy will remain until such time as the process is concluded, the field process is concluded. If a member does not lodge an application appeal with SAICAT, then proceedings could commence to fill that casualty vacancy once that one-month period has expired. But at this moment, we don't know what's happening in that space. So it's a watch and see. And if the vacancies do proceed, and there is a next step that is required, and I suppose if I say that in the opposite direction, if a member is not reinstated to the position currently vacated, then if that is for the position of the mayor, a supplementary election will be held in the Waiar City Council to determine the mayor or the office of the mayor. In relation to the two council member vacancies, we are seeking legal advice in terms of what will occur with those if they are not, if positions are not reinstated. Reason being is that we have, this council does have a policy around the retention of casualty vacancies in the event of casualty vacancies. So we need to understand what the operation of that policy is in the context of the current circumstances. If we do proceed to fill those casualty vacancies, then it will happen on one or two ways. One is either through a compact. And what that means is that those candidates who stood for election in the November 2022 periodic elections, those candidates who were next in line with the number of votes from those of you who have been elected, will be asked by the electoral commission if they are prepared to join the council. If they are prepared to join the council, then they will be appointed or elected to those positions. If they are not willing to join the council, then it will keep going through the candidate list until such time as either the two casualty vacancies or the number of casualty vacancies are filled through that process. If that process does not give rise to filling that casualty vacancy, then it will go to a supplementary election. So there is a number of steps that will need to be gone through before casualty vacancies are completed. In the first instance, though, as I mentioned, we do need to receive some legal advice as to the operation of council's supplementary election policy that it has in place. And administration will set that legal advice within due time before it's actually necessary. So we've still got a little way to go before we need to do that. So I'm going to pause there for a moment and ask if there's any questions on that element of the circumstance.
Just one question, Cathy.
Yes, just in regards to supplementary election. And if that is the case, would that be the outcome that we have in the coming year?
Yes, probably. That's my understanding, yes. And the next quarter or part of this discussion now needs to turn to the impact on this council as to the casualty vacancies. And one of those impacts is that we've got a vacancy in the office of the mayor. And the council therefore needs to appoint an acting mayor to act in that role until such time as we have either a reinstated mayor or a mayor who is elected through supplementary election. So the time period for the acting mayor is unknown at this point because we cannot know exactly how long any SAICAT, if a SAICAT process is undertaken, how long SAICAT process will take, and then indeed, if a supplementary election will be needed. So we don't know the timeframe at this moment in time. However, in terms of acting mayor, the reason why we do need to appoint an acting mayor, and again, we receive legal advice of the council, by reason of failing to lodge the second campaign donation return a casualty vacancy, as we know, to have arisen in the office of the mayor. When a casualty vacancy arises under the Local Government Act, section 54, sub-sections eight and nine, would usually operate to facilitate the appointment of an acting mayor. That section cannot be used in this circumstance because the provisions of that section don't quite fit the circumstances that have arisen whereby we've had a casualty vacancy and potential supplementary elections. On that basis, we then turn to sections 51, 6 and 7 of the Act to see if that gives us guidance in terms of the acting mayor. And unfortunately, those two sections which deal with the deputy mayor acting in the role of the mayor do not actually cover the circumstances either. And this is because the section is very limited to circumstances where the mayor is absent from being able to perform the official functions and duties. And there's a distinction between being absent from office and a casualty vacancy. And when the mayor is absent from office, enabling the appointed deputy mayor to act in the role as the mayor, the mayor still remains in office per se. And that person is simply unable to fulfil the official functions and duties at the time or right now. In addition, our electoral deputy mayor policy is subject to all circumstances that we're currently facing. This means, based on legal advice, that although we do have deputy mayor appointed, the deputy mayor does not automatically act in the office of mayor. And according to these circumstances, the appointment of acting mayor is needed by resolution of the council this evening. So that explains as to why we are moving to appoint an acting mayor this evening and why a deputy mayor is not automatically fulfilling the position of acting mayor. Of course, there are any questions? Thank you. And in terms of process, the council has an adopted position in terms of appointing persons to purity roles. And we feel it is our recommendation, or we feel that that process is suitably robust and appropriate to facilitate the appointment of an acting mayor. And that process was included at HCC to the report. I'll hand over to Justin now to commence facilitating this process.
Thank you, Cathy. Just before we start the process, and we still have meetings, proceedings, standing room proceedings, or asshole standing room proceedings. Is there any questions about the process as listed in HCC? Or is it that we are having to form a meeting and just commence that process? And, all right. Okay, can I just get a show of views that we'll return to as meeting proceedings are in place? Thank you, it's carried. Okay, so what I'm now going to do is call for nominations for councillors to, for the position of acting mayor. In calling for nominations, councillors can nominate themselves. After we have an indication of who's been nominated, if a councillor nominates another councillor, the councillor nominated needs to accept that nomination. Once we know who has been nominated position, I'll then ask for each of those nominees to speak for three minutes to provide some information to support their nomination for the acting mayor position. Okay, so I can now call the nominations. Okay, councillor. Councillor Knox. Councillor Wardle. I've called it on there. Nominate for sale. Councillor Wardle. Councillor Pond.
Councillor Pond.
Councillor Pond. Any other nominations? No, okay. So in that order, I'll now ask each of those councillors who've stopped watching to speak for no more than three minutes to talk to why they've nominated to the position. And so with councillor Knox.
I think this is very sad and subjective to answer, obviously. We're a mate who's been a very, very good team. And we're having events that feel a bit tense, we're connected all so far. But that's what we're using, I understand. They've had problems performing, myself, in that email and my return. It's a bit of a work spice, isn't it, for me? Now I'm retired, so I've got time to vote. I think we made several good times in the vote because of the productive opportunities we had. It's kind of involved, it's involved most of the processes. In the past, we certainly had that. I was second actually with Justin Miss for 13 years. And the senior chairs of the council for 12 years. I've been chair of Waiar Education Board, been chair of the University of South Australia, I've been captain of state of the country for a hundred years. I've heavily involved a lot of committees around this community as well. I spent five years working in Waiar before the Waiar Education Board before. As a matter of fact, getting the report from my services to get along with development. And I would be proud to step up and keep the seat openly filled. And I do it because I really think my job and development will come in very, very handy over the next period of time.
Thank you, councillor Knox. Mr. Wardle.
Justin, I think you're all very interested about the circumstances that he's raised. And the reason I'm here on council is first, almost, because I'm committed and capable of being this community driver. I'm excited to represent one way of Waiar as the world in a way that makes the community proud. I have a passion for the fundamentals that make Waiar such a wonderful place to live and work. And I'm already joyfully sharing this message to anyone who will listen, and even if we people that won't listen. I bring with me 18 years of experience of balancing corporate and community interests with over a decade of being fully engaged in local negotiations in Adelaide. And in 2017, becoming a local business owner here in Waiar in a meaningful and wise industry. As a committed husband of 13 years and currently raising a young family, I understand what individuals and families want for a prosperous and healthy community. This combined experience gives me a unique statement on living and working in Waiar. And it plays for me very well and confidently and comfortably in the community and in the business side of Waiar, and represent Waiar accurately and passionately to external stakeholders. I'm fondly aware of the importance to find middle ground between the operational efficiency of the industry and their social and environmental impact. This balance must be worked very closely over the foreseeable future and beyond as Waiar sits on the precipice of one generation expansion. I have the ability to present information in a positive and easily digestible way to foster a better understanding for the community of the interdependent relationship of council, community and industry. In closing, I'm excited and passionate about representing our home of Waiar. As acting mayor for as long as the need be, I will be rather required of support. Thank you.
And thank you, councillor Wardle. Councillor Pond.
Yes, again, I'd like to narrow what's been said before. It's a very upsetting time for us. But it's just something that we need to work through. And I think we've got a great team here that are really going to support each other till we get through this issue. Putting myself forward as acting mayor, I have a lot of experience. I also am a long-term resident of Waiar, I've been here for over 40 years. I have proven myself as a community champion for well over 20 years. I have mentioned before that I've received quite a few community service awards. And that actually includes three Australian badges by three different names, which definitely shows my longevity and my passion to the community. And I also have quite a few connections with state and federal government. And my connections here within the business sector, I think, will be quite valuable to the role. I also see myself as a people person and very much someone who likes to bring everyone together to work as a team, which would be beneficial for the organisation. And I've been very proud to support an amazing community in what I see for a very short-term role until that says, issue does get sorted. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pond. Okay, I'll now ask Cathy to issue the ballot papers. And if you can please mark, just with an X, the councillor that you wish to vote for for the position of acting mayor. Or the name, by the name, sorry. And once you've done that, we'll then collect the ballot papers, do a counting, and we'll then look to exclude one person from the process and then request for the remaining two councillors. Just while Cathy is doing the count. Once we have a first candidate for the position, I'm going to look to ask councillors to move to resolution 4.1.5b, which is in relation to the appointment of the acting mayor. And then we'll turn our attention to the other recommendations through all of the departments of Tumasi Gema. Okay, after the first round of voting, we confirm that councillor Wardle has been excluded from the process. So we'll now read through the camps with councillor Knox and councillor Pond as the two remaining councillors. So again, we'll issue the ballot paper. Again, please record on the ballot paper which of the two remaining members, councillor Pond or councillor Knox, you wish to appoint to the position of acting mayor. Hey. On the second round of voting, we confirm that councillor Knox has received the highest number of votes. So I've now asked councillors, or someone's, to move that councillor Knox be appointed as acting mayor until such time as the office of the mayor is filled either by a red state or supplementary election. Has someone moved the X?
Yeah, I did a quick reading. There's council some benefits, not a cost. I've been addressed.
Sure. And you will note that councillor Knox has just declared a conflict of interest and a very material personal interest in this matter given the potential appointment to the position. It notes that there are certain allowances of benefits that may develop to the mayor. So I've got councillor English moving and councillor Wardle seconding the resolution that's before you. Before I put that, is there any discussions or conversation further to debate in this matter? If not, I put that motion or that's in favour. That's carried unanimously, thank you. Now have councillor, now acting mayor, Knox return to the meeting and will assume the role of presiding for the meeting.
A lot of people who are confident in me. I certainly tried very, very hard to do a good job. Whether I said KPC, no, it happened, we've been returned. Thank you very much. I'll move on now to the nominations and I'll just, just move on. Thank you, say your words.
Thank you, acting mayor. So just wanted to include an additional recommendation for your considerations at the moment. One of the requirements on the ballot government is that that we need to have do formal notifications regarding the vacancy created. So we've got an additional recommendation before you, which is up on the screen, item number two, with councillor Knox's appointment. Um with um uh councillor Notts's appointment to the position of acting mayor, we no longer require item three as per the agenda papers, given that we had a deputy mayor and don't require to deal with that one. And we still have the uh recommendation, which is that we reach out to the council meetings. I'm happy to respond in person to any questions about um those remaining recommendations reported.
Congratulations. Okay. Someone would like to move another one. There is a receipt of that to if you want to let them period period of issues slowly to be bought. So move it. Oh, sorry. Okay. But it's on the menu. It's possibly happening as I said before. Move by Bill Simpson, councillor Simpson, and seconded by Kate Smith. Congratulations. Will it fail her? Down. Item number three.
Um sorry, if you may, the man. The man. If we could, I'm now just return to the declaration of office. Um sorry, I've never seen the interest.
Sure. Is there anybody that has any thoughts in interest in restricting that to you, to you, to councilman and the mayor? Think I've nailed it. No, I don't know.
Yeah.
The world as well.
Yes, uh so um I just wanted to uh but an interior personal interest in relation to item four point two point one to compromise agenda in relation to as you understand, please. So I will debate the agenda whilst that matter extends itself.
Okay, we're off. So we have the vision of twenty February eighteen. We have a Monday at twenty seven, twenty twenty two, and some other important topics. Where councillor Pocky Carset, where councillor Water.
Haven't we done that?
Any questions or anything in session? The Rock, will it fail her? Will it fail her? Down. There is one, all the information you're asking from the executive mission. Next, that's two. Four, I have to do the new areas you've got a special panel. Who's got the comments in the way?
Briefly acting mayor, um just. Um so this um should be relatively straight forward matter that the council consider. And the reason we put this on the agenda tonight is that the state government is currently consulting regarding a issued patent in relation to a proposed hydrogen and renewable energy bill uh which they have drafted um uh following the consultation um process that's underway. Um a longstanding issue within local governments has been the current exclusion that companies have um from paying council rates where their developments or land use uh relates to power generation. Uh this is a matter that sort of dates back to the nineteen nineties when the former state government's bio ties electricity um sector um back in the nineteen nineties, um we think that the um uh operating environment is very different now and typically looking forward with hydrogen renewable energy being significant um um ethnic generator and all the state. And so the intent of this um recommendation is that we gain raise for the state elements and the need for that extension to be revisited and specifically in the context of this new bill um to be drafted and its inspiration and in base in the other piece of the legislation that now will be the appropriate time for the state government to redress that that um issue that you have with the sending arrangements. So I'm happy to respond to any questions. Um the council previously has been across this issue, it is a sector wide issue of concern. Um so um the intent is to be able to let them to say government um whilst during the consultation process to try and go um trade some of the draft in the legislation going forward.
Yes, the rest of the council in the state.
Standing on the bench.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. Didn't use the list. All right, so they moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not willing to play with it?
I do.
CEO now leave the waiting room to bathroom. Four point two point five, see the annual lead. I'm all there, yeah? Look at my train of wheels. Um okay, four point two point one, CEO, annual lead, pay gap. Um is there any discussion you can look at there in this matter?
I could please through the mayor and make some comments.
Okay, sure.
And acting acting mayor. Um if I could recommend that council enter into confidence to discuss this item, one of the matters that wasn't actually included in the report is the financial impact in terms of disposition. Uh because as during the course of the day, we were still doing uh some assessment on that. And um we are feeling that it would be useful for the council to come to conference to have conversation in relation to this item on the basis of that it deals with matters relating to personal affairs and personal living or debt, needing to check your executive officer.
We heard that. Someone would like to move to go into conference. Yes, Pocky Carver. Councillor Reston is seconding. Will it fail her? Harry. Okay, now it's going to go ahead with the laws, you're asked to be acting mayor. Do you think we're then while we're discussing another item? You're beginning.
In dog.
Yeah. Thanks for the applause. Thank you for your candidates. And thank you down here that is still here for um sliding for us to retain a specific way. Thank you.